If everybody's ready.
Welcome to our board study meeting tonight. It's good to have everybody here. We don't have any board business, so we'll start with some updates. Heidi got caught on a phone call, so that's kind of what we're waiting for a little bit. Do you want to just hang off or do you want to get started, Lane?
I can start.
Okay, go ahead. Lane and Heidi Oliver are going to talk to us, walk us through our school resource officer contract that we've been working on through the summer, and also the renaming and revised policy 2110.
Board, to start out, we talked a little bit today at our last meeting about the interlocal agreement that we have with our law enforcement partners in Weaver County. In the past, that agreement has been for a period of five years, and it was up for renewal this year. We started negotiations with the sheriff's office and the five other police departments as we began back in March, and it was an interesting few meetings to get started. There was a consensus with the chiefs and the sheriff that the school district should pay a larger portion of the contracts for SROs. It used to be a pretty equal split, a 50/50. Initially, the ask was to have the school district pay 100%, which we felt was unreasonable, and so over several months, there were negotiations and meetings and lots of information that was shared, and that percentage came down to an 80/20. And then eventually, after we met as a group with Gina and Heidi and Robert and some of our directors, Paul was part of this process, we settled on an offer of 70/30 split, and that increase will be phased in over a period of three years. And so, the contract currently is for you to be reviewed and approved, and it has also been sent out to the county and the cities for approval through their city council and the county commission. We think everyone's in agreeance. You never know when that goes out, and different eyes start looking at different things, and so I'm hopeful that the hard work's behind us is just a matter of formalizing that contract. You will see if it's included, there's an attachment that outlines the specific formula and the costs, and again, those will be phased in over a three-year period. Unlike previous contracts that were five-year contracts, this will be a three-year contract, so we will be back at the table in three years to see where we're at moving forward. Now, jump.
Can we get out of that contract early if we find another need or another...
Yes, there are provisions written into it that that contract can be terminated by either party, given advance notice.
Yeah, 30 days.
I think it's a 90-day notice. That was a concern that was raised from law enforcement is particularly the sheriff's office, if we were to terminate that contract, what would they do with their deputies who are assigned in the schools? And so, but we both felt that there should be something in there that allows one party to exit that if there's something that changes. And there could be. I mean, when you start looking at the cost per officer, and you look at surrounding districts, and you look at like a granite school district that has their own police department, that then I think opens the door to some conversations long-term as far as what are the best options. Our preference this whole time was to still contract with our law enforcement partners. There's a great value in having all those officers in our schools, and so we'll see. And you never know where our state law's going to go as well.
Yeah, I was going to ask you if we had any updates from the slated committee that was looking at that.
Yeah, so there's a task force that was put together this year, part of HB 61, and their primary job is to look at school safety and SROs, that is part of it. When that bill first was introduced, it actually required an SRO at every school in every district in the state, and they backed off of that primarily because of the funding that would be attached to it, and then moved to mandating an SRO in every secondary school. They backed off that as well because I believe there was some charters in different schools, rural school districts that didn't have SROs, and there was some concern over the financial piece with that as well. But if you look at the origins of that bill, that certainly was the intent to expand having officers in schools, and it's just figuring out how that's going to be funded. My understanding that that bill was introduced by Representative Ryan Wilcox, who's in our north area, and listening to him speak as well as Commissioner Anderson with the Department of Public Safety, that HB 61 is the ground floor of what they want to build related to school safety, so the next few years could be very interesting as far as that. And that task force is currently meeting, and we'll probably see some more legislation this year related to school safety. So that's the big piece as far as the interlocal agreement.
I have one question.
Yes.
So on the cost, we're paying, you know, the 50, 60, 70%, but that's off of 70% of their salary because we're only funding them for the school year, is that right?
Yeah, so how it works is you take the cost of an FTE, and that was settled on to be about $170,000, so it's more than just wages. It's benefits, it's equipment, it's vehicles, it's all that, the cost that is for the agency to employ one officer. And so that amount, 170, that's for the entire year. Of course, we don't have SROs during the summertime, so you basically factor that by 70% to take out the summer months. That remaining amount is the split. This year, it stays at 50/50, although there is a pretty significant increase to the cost of the FTEs. So we'll jump from about $47,000 per officer, which is what we paid last year, to about $60,000 this year. And then there will be an adjustment on that formula going from 50/50 to 64 to 70/30 over the next couple of years. So it will be phased in, and then the other part of it too that will increase our costs as well is the addition of Westfield and Mountain View, which will both require SROs from the sheriff's office, so there'll be those additional costs next year with the contract. So when you look at it overall, we will jump from about, I think, $633,000 is what we paid last year, and in three years, we'll be paying about, I can rule over $1.3 million for law enforcement services, so it's a pretty big jump. Fortunately, Robert's good with it all.
We're phasing it in.
Phasing it in, which was helpful. That was, it helps absorb that cost when you look at those increases, so. Any other questions related to the interlocal agreement? Do you want me to speak to the other part?
It's interesting, as I've discussed that with people, there's not, it's not a well-known that we have to pay for that service. Everybody thinks that the police, the departments just, you know, hey, we'd love to be in your schools.
Yeah, well, historically, that was how it started.
That's kind of how it started out.
Agencies wanted officers in schools, and so they were willing to commit to that, and then over time, that's become kind of a split responsibility. I think we're seeing that pendulum continue to swing where there's a greater expectation for school districts to pay for that, and so I think that trend's going to continue. We're not the only ones that were faced with it. There are other districts that are going through negotiations this year that were faced with the same dilemma that we were. Do you want me to speak to the other part? The policy?
Heidi's here.
Okay, carry on.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Not a problem.
For some reason, I have schedules and stuff in my mind.
We started a little early today, so.
That's fine. We are required by law to implement an SRO policy if we had SROs, which we do. And so, the requirements of the statute are fairly skeletal. They just want to be sure that we have a policy in place that outlines the relationship that we have with SROs, and also identifies any of the other important elements that are actually written into our interlocal agreement that Lane was just talking to you about. And so, the policy that we presented to you that we'll ask the board to approve on first reading at the meeting is in your packet, is a new policy. It's not an amendment to any policy that we've had, it's a brand-new policy. It's number, did we number it? I'm sorry, I think it's number...
2110.
2110, thank you. Yes, 2110, and we would, you can see that the policy isn't very lengthy because all of the specific details regarding the relationships our district has with SROs, the roles of administrators versus the roles of law enforcement, this is the roles of the district versus the role of the agency, is all spelled out in the interlocal agreement. And so, the policy is just primarily to meet the mandates of the statute. I'm talking to address the other policies all in here. I'm sorry, I'm throwing off everybody.
If you need a few minutes, go ahead.
Why don't we just go ahead and go? Yeah, that's okay.
Okay. Mr. Larson, do you need some setup time with...
We just got it.
Okay, all right. Dr. Peterson, you want to talk to us about our tip?
Okay, I've got a hand. I've got a hand out here.
Is it a spreadsheet?
Yeah. Of course it's a spreadsheet.
I'm sorry, that was my outside voice, I'm sorry.
Is there any other document for him?
That's why I mentioned what I did, Bruce.
Oh, he has a document he deals with.
Okay, this would never work. Okay, I just wanted to go through the mechanics of how it works so that you can, oh, it got chopped off. It's two pages.
Uh-oh, I was going to send him over.
That's kind of sick. Anyway, I just wanted to go through the mechanics of how a tip, CRA, works for especially our new members, and man, that's a good read for everyone else. There's a long history, and I won't go into the long history. It started decades ago with the RDA, you sometimes still hear it referred to as a redevelopment agency, RDA, and they've changed their acronym over time. The latest is a CRA, a Community Redevelopment Agency. And basically, what it is, is the city will go into an area or the county, the entity, and they'll designate a project area, and they'll come to the people that collect property tax on that project area as it exists, and they'll say, we want to develop this better than it already is. And so, they'll come in and they'll say, once we develop it, your taxes are going to, your tax collections are going to increase by quite a bit. And to help incentivize new business to come in, we'll give you a portion of that tax increase, and then the remainder will be used for the development. This Marriott Sladeville Central Business District that we're talking about tonight is, it's just textbook. There is a little area in Marriott Sladeville, and they are, we currently collect $44,766. That's our current collection. They want to expand the capabilities of that little area to get more business access and attract more businesses, and there's a business or two that's poised and ready to expand, but they cannot. American Lynn, our friend Doug Larson is going to, what's there right now, we might as well tag to you.
Isn't it Model Lynn?
Yeah.
I work for that company.
So Doug Larson, he, and then...
Need to stay here?
No, I'm fine.
Simply ask their questions because you know where I am, and then I'll get back to my little chart that came in two pieces.
It's Model Lynn.
Okay.
Primary developer.
It should be a G.
Potential.
In your packet, I gave a map of the project area, but I think Doug might have a project area map on your presentation that's going to be up shortly. But we'll get back to Doug, we'll have his presentation. Those are all, good questions, Kelly. Anyway, so in the first year, that the year one, we are poised and ready to collect $106,000 or about $122,000 more than we're already collecting. And $61,000 will go to the district, so right after that, we make money because of the new development, and $61,000 will, in this case, will go to the project, and they need a sewer line. They need a sewer line to attract businesses, and that's what we're helping pay for over time. And it's just not our entity. We're typically the biggest property tax portion, but there's the county, the city, and other special agencies like the fire district or the sewer district, those kind of things. And that $61,000 is an average over time, it's just the 10-year average, and that could, it's anticipated that that will actually increase over time as the property values, they've made estimates, but they always try to be conservative on their estimates. And so, as you can see, over time, we will help, we will help develop that area, and at the same time, our tax new money will be $612,000 over that 10-year period, and the CRA, the Community Redevelopment Agency, will get, will get $612,000 as well. It's a 50/50 split, so sometimes we'll hear that, what's the split? How much goes to the entity, which is the district? How much goes to the CRA? Another thing you'll hear is, what is the time period? Is it, we like the shorter the better because we want to get in and get out, and this one's 10 years. Sometimes they try to negotiate, or they do negotiate for longer, it just varies from... It varies from instance to instance. The other thing is, we don't necessarily like to put in retail because that competes with the other retail businesses that are already there, and they'll say, what's about us? We're not getting something. But we like to have development that's real as far as developing the infrastructure. And so, that's what is, this is a classic textbook that checks all the boxes of what we consider the ideal CRA. I'm teeing you up, Doug, for a presentation. The other thing I want to say is that we have a tip. Tip, it means tax increment financing. We have a tip committee of the, some committee of the board, and they vet this out before we've answered on the full board. And they'll ask the tough questions, like, what's the project for? Does it meet our guidelines? How many of you guys want 20 years and 80% over 20 years? Or, can you dial that back? The kind of, the negotiation kind of occurs there before it comes to the full board. And it's, if we didn't do this, this is the other thing, and Doug can attest to this, businesses and stuff will likely, we're competing with other places. We're competing with other places in Utah and out of the state in many instances. And every state locality have their laws and their incentives, and they try to give new businesses, and at the same time, not keep the existing businesses happy, not go overboard, because the existing businesses will say, what about us? But at the same time, if we don't do something, businesses are likely to go elsewhere. What we want to do is leverage our money and do what's best for the district and get it more tax dollars, because without this development, we're earning $44,000 a year. With this development, it's an average of $106,000. So that's, that's my little explanation on tips. Doug, you could probably jump in.
Thank you, Robert. Well, it's certainly nice to be here with all of you, and fortunate enough to know most of you, but not all of you, and I hope that we get to know one another personally ones that we haven't met yet. Again, I'm Doug Larson. I'm here on behalf of Marriott Sladeville City. And thank you, Robert, for the introduction of how tax increment works and a little bit about this project. I think that worked. So we've all, and I think we're happy when technology works, particularly after the last few years of virtual meetings, spending countless minutes of trying to figure out what went wrong. Anyway, back to this community reinvestment project area proposal. This is, again, obviously located in Marriott Sladeville. The project area boundary, which is in blue, encompasses about 98 acres in Marriott Sladeville. It's just south of 12th Street, and you can see 17th Street is a primary artery that runs through and on the boundary of the project area. To maybe better orient you, just northwest of the northwest corner of the project area is Jeremiah's Restaurant, if that makes, if that helps a little bit. Anyway, our current taxable value of all taxable property inside that 98 acres is about $8.1 million. We're estimating after the 10-year period, we're anticipating taxable value to be in the neighborhood of $25 million, consistent with your guiding principle policy as it relates to tax increment agreements. This is, as Robert indicated, this is, we're asking the school district and all other entities to participate for 10 years at 50%. We're asking the same thing from all the participating taxing entities. We estimate total tax increment coming to Marriott Sladeville's redevelopment agency at just over $1 million. You should have a budget in your packet, which gives you all of the detail as to how we get there. An important thing, the use of the tax increment that comes into the agency will be strictly directed to the investment of public infrastructure. Later in your board meeting, the public meeting, we'll be asking you to entertain the approval of an interlocal agreement. That interlocal agreement binds the city to only use the money for public infrastructure. Robert indicated a little bit about what's going to happen. Along 17th Street, it's almost 100% septic system along 17th Street, so for expanded commercial, industrial, manufacturing, warehousing development, we must have sewer. And so, the 100% of the tax increment that comes to the agency, net of the 10% housing set aside, which is required by the state code, and we're asking 3% of the total money come to the agency for administration. All the rest of it will fund public infrastructure. It will be a new sewer line along 17th Street, and we're doing it in cooperation or in harmony with a road reconstruction project, which will occur next year, and so, an even greater use of public dollars. We're doing a road project, ripping the road up once, we're installing a new sewer line, and also, Bonavista Water will be installing a new culinary water line, again, in harmony with the road project, so we're happy about that. It's really frustrating when we see new road go in, and the following year, part of it's torn up or something, and so, we're lucky that we've been able to time that well or hope to time that well. So again, new sewer lines, secondary water lines. We have a 2022 estimate from Jones Engineering for the infrastructure at just over $1 million, which the tax increment that will come in over that 10-year period, we're estimating will be about $1 million, and yet, the shortfall, the city will fund that shortfall. Marriott Sladeville City is not going to bond for the money, they're going to pay for it upfront, and this actually will pay the city back over that 10-year period. The initial development that's coming in, the city's willingness and the participating taxing entities to move the public infrastructure forward sooner than later has triggered the switch for the primary developer to start their expansion now as opposed to a speculative term some years down the road. And so, the sooner the development starts, that increases the taxable value and obviously the taxable revenue that comes to all the entities. Robert touched on this a little bit. The tax increment won't support any development for retail or residential, that's not part of the development plan in the project area in any event. Again, we talked about 10 years, 50%. You should have a packet, in your packet, the detailed copy of the budget. At this point, do you have any questions on numbers or the purpose or intent of the project? I mentioned the tax code requires us to have a 10% housing set aside. That 10% is only required if the annual tax increment exceeds $100,000 or more to a given agency. Marriott Sladeville has a housing authority and a housing plan, so it's important that we all know that as that money comes into the city, it will go into their housing fund and be part of a long-term housing plan, which we've actually spent some time with the district and your technical college and figuring out maybe a cooperative partnership with that money in the future where your, your district could help with the construction of a moderate-income housing project area. So hopefully, we'll get an opportunity to work on that in the future. Robert went through this, and I'll just quickly, again, right now, off of that 98 acres, the school district's generating about $45,000 in revenue. At the end of the 10-year period, we're estimating that revenue will go up to about $136,000. During the 10-year period, we're estimating $61,000 in new revenue. You will continue to get what you're getting now, the $45,000, we're just asking for a portion of the new tax that's generated.
Wonderful.
I went over 10 minutes. Sorry, some board members.
You're good. Any questions for Doug while he's here? He's done a good job of that, and we appreciate everything you've helped us with through the years also. You've been a great resource for us.
I very much enjoy the relationship. If I may ask, since we're in a work session, when we get to the actual public meeting, how, how detailed of a presentation do you want me to give?
I think it's already done.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
I think it's a trigger date.
Heidi, are you ready to go again? Okay. Wonderful. Doug, did you have a trigger date on that?
Do you know when your trigger day was shooting for, Doug?
We're in a work session, so I can just talk to you.
Yeah, exactly.
No later than 2026, so if we don't trigger the project by 2026, it goes away. And that's the interlocal.
Yeah, and we needed that for another potential, so thank you. Thank you.
Doug, when is the road going to be triggered?
Next year.
Next year, so we have to jump on that.
Yes.
Thank you. Heidi Oliver, please.
Okay. In addition to policy 2110, which is our SRO policy, we are also revising the video usage policy, policy 8400. This is a policy that has not been updated for over 20 years, and we have had requests from teachers and media specialists to update the video usage policy to recollect more current practices in the district with regard to what types of media can be utilized in classrooms. It looks like there's a lot of edits, but most of it is formatting rather than substance. The real substantive changes are just modifying the ratings of the videos that can be used in elementary, junior high, and high school. And so, if you look at section five, it talks about the elementary schools can use short segments of videos that are rated G and PG. Junior highs can use videos that are rated G and PG. In ninth grade, short segments of the G13 may be shown with quite these parameters placed around that, including not being allowed to show any portions of a movie containing nudity, nudity, except for violence or profanity. Rated R movies will not be shown in any portion to any of the schools. In high schools rated GPG or PG13 movies may be shown. And that, that really is the only update to the policy in a substantive manner. Like I said, it looks like there's been a lot of changes, but most of it's just formatting. That's policy 8400. It will present the search and seizure policy, 5300, for the board's approval on second reading during the board... It will present the search and seizure policy, Fifty-three-hundred, for the board's approval on the second reading during the board meeting tonight. Any questions?
I have a question. So previous elementary can only do G, right? So this is adding to that. And then in the policy, it just says short segments. So generally speaking, teachers aren't to be showing, even with instructional value, full movies unless it's part of like, like my son's taking service cinema, so I know they watch full movies. But for the most part, teachers shouldn't be showing, right?
There is a section in the back where the policy does allow teachers to use movies for entertainment or rewards on certain circumstances at the end of the year, during Christmas break. In those cases, the whole movie will be shown. But generally speaking, when teachers are using a movie for instructional purposes, it should be the whole movie according to the policy.
And then for ninth grade, does that still require parental approval? I know I've gotten that before where I get like a permission slip for my kid to be watching a certain show. So if whether, so in ninth grade, you don't need the parental permission slip for the PG thirteen? So now that that's included in the policy?
No, not as it's right now. Certainly open to any suggestions from the board.
I mean, and so then, in those cases, like for PG thirteen, is that up to the teacher to let parents know what movies are shown so kids can opt out or parents can opt out? Is that just a general, I mean, that's not part of the policy, but is that common practice?
Kelly, I think we could definitely discuss that with the board and make that decision. If you'd like to have that kind of parent, you know, notice go out.
I just like, for me personally, I mean, I just know a lot, there are a contingency of parents that do like to know, especially in a PG thirteen, what movies are shown. And then with the option to opt out if they show.
And it might be, just, just to suggest that maybe that, if the board wants to add to that, add that to the policy, have that be a practice for the showing of full movies. I know a lot of teachers will use a clip from a movie to show a historical piece or something. And I don't know the practical impact of having teachers send home notices or get parent permission for two or three-minute segments, showing they show a segment of a PG thirteen movie.
Yeah, and I don't know, I just know that in the past I have signed permit, like my kids have come home, whether it's electronic or an actual paper. So I just wanted to know what that was, what that works.
Yeah.
We appreciate the feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a step up from when John and I was in high school, and they would just put their hand in front of the projector for a few minutes, and then they pull it out. That was how they edited it up for us.
Look at us now.
They never even.
Oh, yeah. They're grills. They would turn on this thing.
We still have projectors. I didn't think you had projectors back then.
They were, they had those big grills that would just take this little thing, and then it'd break, and you'd tape it.
Hey.
Sorry.
Okay, let's go on with our boundary study. Mary Joelle and Brock Mitchell, please.
All right. Before we have reached an interesting time in this study, whereas the committee, we are ready to look at some recommendations that the committee put together and propose them to you, and I to get some feedback, ask some questions, just really dive into the process. In the study session, we want to make sure we have time to go through each of the proposals, give you guys an opportunity to ask those questions. In the, in the board meeting, we will dive deeper into the process as far as policy to make sure that that's really well hammered out. As we go through this, just a reminder of the goals. The goals that we set out for as a committee were to create the boundaries for the new schools. So the new Westfield High School, Mountain View Junior High, and the new elementary school. With that, we figured there was going to be some adjusting, so we wanted to make sure that we, we took that into account, looking at the capacity and making sure we balance out enrollment, consider the programs that each of our schools were using to educate our students, make sure that that's something that is still an option in our schools, and then present and prepare and present the proposals to the board all along the way, gathering the feedback from the community, trying to be as transparent as we possibly could. This was governed by Policy Forty-One-Fifty-One that talks about the, the process that this goes into. It mentions the three different levels, level one, level two, and level three. All of the specifics go into those, the committee members that need to be involved. We knew that because of the, the depth of this, it was going to be a level-three committee, a boundary adjustment, which includes obviously the board and the superpenalty and all of our, our committees. Committees that we put together as the co-chairs of this, it started with a district boundary committee. Our policy talks about twenty persons. Because of the scope of this, we set up three separate committees by cone, a Weaver Cone, a Fremont Cone, and a Roy Cone. And so each of those cones had a committee, and we brought those committees together to, to get final information gathered. We asked them to communicate with each other. Those are smaller groups per school, three representatives per school, to come together to help inform this process. I'll go into those responsibilities a little more in-depth in the, in the board meeting. The schools also were asked to put a meeting, or a committee together, this is the school boundary committee. This is made up of representatives of the community. So all of the three district committee members were part of the school committee, as well as additional community council members, parent-teacher representatives, members of the community as invited by the principal to inform at the school level, and then take that back to the district committee vote. And again, here are the responsibilities of those school teams. As we set up as a committee the study, we spread this out that allowed for the schools to hold their school committee meetings in between the district committee meetings. That gave about a month in between each of those for those school teams to go talk with the community, poll in, you know, parents, students, make sure that they're gathering all of the information to inform the decisions around the, the boundary creations. What we did then is each time we brought the district committee together, the district committee looked at the proposals from each of the school teams, tried to identify areas of concern cohesively as best possible, worked with the other school committees to redraw the potential boundaries as they worked through each of these meetings. And that process repeated itself over the course of this process. Halfway through, you can see down on the lower left, we had three open houses, one per cone. In those open houses, we showed the proposals to that point, asked for feedback, and that feedback actually produced some additional proposals that we'll go through tonight. We've gotten to the point where we're now at the board presentation. In between this first reading, the second reading will gather more feedback, have another district committee, and take that feedback, make adjustments as necessary. So as I mentioned, those are the steps we've taken to this point.
Second reading next one.
Correct.
Correct. And that will be the final?
Correct. Yep.
Good luck.
A couple of things that we asked as a committee to consider, the splitting of schools because of the fact that we're now going from eight junior highs and four high schools, which is an even two-to-one split, to now five high schools and nine junior highs. And I say that knowing that Snell Press is where they're at, and they're not going to be impacted here. It is an uneven split with that five tonight, so we will be dealing with some split schools. In the past, the district has had split schools. This is something that we just wanted as a committee to make sure that the, the whole committee was aware of that. We took into account safety, the use of portables, the walk zones of schools, the capacity and the room for growth. In all the, the proposals, the committee wanted to make sure that there was still room for growth within the schools and not to overload our schools. The committee took into account the dual-language programs, the teacher buyouts, and how that weighs on them. The grandfathered students currently, as the district boundaries are accepted and in policy, our current fifth grade going to be sixth graders next year, eighth graders going to be ninth graders next year, and eleventh graders going to be twelfth graders next year would be considered grandfathered and could stay at the school that they're currently at. So that's something we wanted to make sure they understand. And then based on capacities, the options and the opportunities for boundary exceptions going forward. Spent a lot of time on walk zones. That's something that the committee wanted to make sure they understood. That's, that was our starting point in all of these. They looked at the walk zone for Westfield, Mountain View, and the new elementary to make sure that as they drew those boundaries and started working, the walk zone was well within the proposed boundaries. And that's something that you will see as we go through this process. So what we would like to do now is take you through the proposals, talk through some of the highlights, the concerned areas, answer any questions, and then we'll kind of let you know which recommendations the committee would like to put toward the board. We wanted to start, Mary Joelle and myself, looking at the high school and showing, you know, all of these areas, the outline in yellow would be the new boundaries for the new schools. So this is the recommendation for the boundary, sorry, for the boundary for Westfield High School. And so you can see it goes along the tracks on Twelfth Street. It's not Twelfth Street itself, it's the, the tracks along Twelfth Street. This area does have some questions that come up. There is a row of houses down this road. The only way to access is from the north. And so to have the buses that pick up students out in the west part of Fremont's boundary, it makes sense for them to just go down that one road and continue towards Fremont.
That's seventy-five-hundred.
Yes. Yep. The boundary in this area takes in that Twenty-first Street, where it crosses over Route Fifteen, comes down into, there's some industrial area here. And then you can see the separation between Roy High School and Westfield proposed. The other point that I wanted to point out is that in all of our proposals going forward, the southernmost line is the Davis County Weaver County line. Currently, our buses go into Davis County and bus thirty-one students into our schools at a transportation cost of over twenty-one thousand dollars. Davis County is building two schools just across the county line, and the committee felt it was in, in the school district's best interest to put the boundary on the county line. And those students are absolutely welcome in our schools as boundary students going forward. So for both proposals at the high school level, the Roy-Westfield-Westfield-Fremont boundary is the same. Right? So those are the same boundaries for those situations. The areas where I wanted to highlight going into the high school is the boundary between Weaver High and Fremont High. The reason this is the area that we're looking at, with Westfield's enrollment taking a majority from Fremont, Fremont would go from our largest high school to our smallest high school. And there was a feeling from the Fremont community that they wanted to help bolster their enrollment back to a sustainable area. Weaver High School is also well over a hundred percent capacity, and there was a need to reduce enrollment at Weaver High School. So the two committees worked together and used Highway Eighty-nine and down into Harrisville as a line to separate the two high school communities. This was the proposal that was taken to the open house. Based on the feedback at the open houses, there was a second proposal that was created. The feedback, a majority of it came from the Harrisville area. A few of their concerns is over the, the years, the boundary studies have tended to pull Harrisville one direction or another. There was also concerns of they are currently, current tenth graders are attending Weaver High. If this were the accepted proposal, those tenth graders would be required to leave Weaver High to Fremont High, which, and that was feedback that came across the whole district, but it was, there was a lot from the Harrisville area. And the, there were a handful of, of community members that are in the dual-language immersion at Weaver that brought up concerns as well. We do have dual-language immersion for Weaver High throughout our district. So that one's something that we do have students to travel for dual-language immersion at this point anyway. So that is the, the proposal for Proposal One. Because of the feedback that was given, the committee recommends to include in the first proposal that students who are current tenth graders actually are grandfathered and given the opportunity to stay at their current high school. So where it had been just current eleventh or twelfth graders, the recommendation by the committee would be, let's drop that down to tenth graders. So any student who started our schools as a tenth grader this two weeks ago would be given the opportunity to stay at their high school through graduation.
Can we do an overlay of the current boundary?
Absolutely.
Can you do that?
Yeah, I, I can, so this, there's current. And that is proposed.
One more time.
Yep.
Black being.
Black being the current boundary.
Which goes, so anything.
So here is Weaver, here is Fremont.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. And so again, that's our proposed. So what I want to show you, again, the southern part of our district remains the same. I want to now pull up and show the second proposal for Weaver High School and Fremont High School. This proposal, zoom in a little bit more, runs down Eighty-nine. And so you can see here, again, that's current. And proposal number two.
Now. Sorry. Can you remind the board the difference in the numbers of students that are affected by those two, specifically at a Weaver High?
Absolutely. Yep, and so that is where I'm going to jump back to this slide really quickly. Proposal One. Fremont currently a hundred and twelve percent. With Proposal One, they dropped to seventy-three. Seventy-five represents four years out. Now, the difficult thing is that's proposed. We know that growth is out there, it will likely be higher. But that would be the reduction at Fremont. Weaver is currently one oh eight, drops them down to ninety-four. Roy is at one oh three, drops them down to ninety-three, and Westfield's opens at seventy. This is Proposal One. Proposal Two, Fremont is at one twelve, it drops them down to sixty-four. Weaver is at one oh eight, it keeps them at one oh three.
Do you have, sorry, do you have the actual like, like numbers of students?
I, I can get that.
You don't have it? Okay.
I can get that.
It doesn't need to be tonight, but could you?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks.
Absolutely. The, the concern even from the committee for Weaver High School is that that doesn't help alleviate the, the load on the faculty. And so the recommendation for the high school would be to the board, Proposal One. Okay, let me pull up the junior highs. So I'm going to try and get through this quickly. So for the junior highs, again, I want to emphasize the proposal and recommendation for Mountain View is outlined in yellow. The proposal cuts into Walquist and some of Sandridge and Rocky Mountain. So I will do the slides, you can see where that's at. So if you'll kind of pay attention to this upper area, the upper yellow, you can see Walquist drops all the way down to here. I have no idea how that happened. I saw it. There we go. Drops all the way down into here, so again, it moves it up in that area. We are roughly eighty-five percent of Walquist enrollment is within their walk zone. There are over a thousand students at Walquist, so that becomes a pretty small school boundary. And so that is the overlay there. Couple of things to pay attention to because this will come up in one of the proposals. I'm going to zoom in a little. This area, right up in here, is currently Sandridge. And, and the reason I bring this up is because I will refer back to this in a future proposal, just to get a closer look at the Mountain View boundary is there.
So Brock, not to interrupt. Brian, is there still five hundred homes proposed northwest of Walquist, right at the S curve?
There is a proposal, they're called JV Ranges. And they're just north of twenty-seven.
So there we go again, we're going to load back up, right in walking distance.
Right. And then that, that by design, we tried to leave every school as a committee, tried to leave the schools with room for growth.
For growth.
Yep. I want to point out just a couple of things that remain consistent through all three junior high proposals. North Ogden had a very slight change. This is in response to Harrisville's concern of constantly being shifted back and forth. Right now, this small area is going to North Ogden Junior High. And this is something that Mary Joelle will reference as well, it goes to Green Acres. It goes to Green Acres. And they cross Washington. Because Washington is as major road as it is, these students are bused. There was some communication that if we were to, as a district committee, go right down to Washington, move that into Orion's boundary, it keeps this Harrisville community together. And those students are going to the same schools. They are our neighbors. They're going to the same schools. And so that's a change that will be consistent in all of the junior highs and ultimately all of the elementary proposals. For the junior high level, there are fourteen students that live in that area. Seven already attend Orion. And Ms. Patton at North Ogden are welcoming the other seven on a boundary of eight Houston. Because of enrollment numbers, Orion did not have any proposed changes. And so again, in response to Harrisville's concern of constantly being in the situation of being back and forth in boundaries, the only small response was that small area proposal. Last little bit in this proposal, and then I'm going to show you the differences in one and two. This community directly crosses the street from Rocky Mountain. And it's currently, so this area here, currently they are bused to Sandridge. And they are across the street from Rocky Mountain Junior High. It's been that way for quite a while. And it is a, it is a hefty number of students. And so when we talk about manipulating that area, it's hard to make that shift without impacting the school significantly one way or another. As this proposal was put together, you notice that walking zone really shifts back to Rocky Mountain. And then Sandridge comes up to the north. What we, as a committee, learned through transgrade work, that creates a three-way elementary split. And three-way splits are something we did not want to do. And so as a committee, they were asked to go back and work with the schools around them to see if there's a way to redraw boundaries, to eliminate the three-way split. That leads to junior high proposal number two. Mountain View's boundaries remain the same in that second proposal. What happens is that area across remains with Sandridge. Sandridge picks up this area and then Rocky Mountain moves north into the area they currently are bringing students in now. So I want to, just quickly so you can kind of get an idea of between the difference of the two, that is proposal one. That's proposal two. Those are the main differences in those proposals. As we started gathering feedback, there's, there's one shift for Sandridge that is important to look at, this area here. This is forty-eight hundred. The area below forty-eight hundred for safety concerns, the committees felt would benefit moving to Roy Junior. So students aren't crossing forty-eight hundred. And that helps clean up that boundary for Sandridge. As this was discussed, we got a lot of feedback from the West Haven area. And the West Haven concerns centered around wanting to keep West Haven communities together and ensuring that those, those students that grow up together have an opportunity to stay together in West Haven. There are concerns about a perception of Sandridge and the school grading and the academics at Sandridge. There is some concerns of when they purchase their homes, understanding that a new junior high was going to be built, they would be within that new area's boundaries. There's a lot of feedback that went around that. And through that discussion, there was a third proposal created. One of the pieces, as the committee discussed Sandridge, I asked it to pay attention to this area earlier, up around Twenty-first Street. In proposals one and two, this area would go to Mountain View. The discussion around proposal three moves that area back to Sandridge. The area that is being looked at, and I'll pull this up in the third proposal in just a minute, of going to Mountain View from Sandridge is, I'm going to try and outline it the best I can with my cursor, is this area here. The distance from this area to Mountain View or Sandridge is pretty well even. They would be bused both ways. No matter which school they're going to, they're not within a walk zone, so it would be bused both directions. Some of the, the feedback from the Sandridge community is if students in this area would like to request boundaries to Mountain View, that is an option. They would have an opportunity to use family transportation to get there. The concern in the third proposal, I'll pull that up now, the concern in the third proposal is it creates an inequitable educational environment. So this is the change and the adjustment. As, as I noted before, this area remains with Sandridge. This area is shifted up to the north. And so just to show current boundaries, if you notice, and I'm going to ask you just to pay attention to Sandridge, Sandridge remains the exact same with the exception, they lose this down here. So they do not have an option, an opportunity in this to gain students. And again, the committee felt, the Sanders committee felt that this area, they are less likely to request boundaries to Mountain View because transportation is a concern. That is a relatively transient area. And the committee felt that providing educational opportunities at Mountain View would give those students a chance to find success at a newer school. Any questions on those? Yes, Jen?
When you define inequitable, are you talking about teacher-student ratio?
The socioeconomic makeup is what was pointed out from these committees. The areas, just, again, I, I believe the committee that proposed the third option approached it from the right mindset. I think as they gathered more information, they understand that the transient nature of the apartments and the condos around Twenty-first Street does create a difficult environment because you're turning over student population.
Move in, move out.
Yeah. And so some stability for a school like Sandridge would benefit the overall school student population. One other argument that was made, that again, I think it was done with the best of intentions, is in this proposal, the committee that put this together noted that they would, they would begin their elementary at one of two. It was Canesville or West Haven. They would then attend Mountain View and then Westfield. So they liked the idea of the junior high flow. In proposal two, they would attend Sandridge in that same area. They would attend West Haven Elementary, Sandridge, and then Westfield. They felt like crossing cones was not a good idea. The thing to understand is that in this proposal, what happens is because this area up on Twenty-first goes to Westfield High School. And so the argument being they go to Sandridge and then Westfield is the exact same argument that they tried to make the other direction. You can't have it both ways. So it negates that argument. Because no matter what, as we saw earlier, there's going to be some crossing.
I just think we need to change the cone mentality as well because we're going to have a lot of different, there's not going to just be a one cone path across the district.
All right, so those are the junior highs. I'll turn it over to Mary Jo for the elementary.
Brock, Brock offered to continue to drive the mountain slides and talks. I appreciate that. One of the things that Brock mentioned was the area over that would be impacted, the students attend Green Acres right now. We bust them across Washington. And the proposal was that they now attend Pioneer Elementary. That is going to be the same in all three elementary proposals that we see. So proposal one, proposal two, proposal three, that is exactly the same. There's also an area between Farmers Elementary and Plain City Elementary that is going to be the same in all three proposals also. So I'll have Brock just drag that up over. It's very minimal to be able to see that. There's where it is right now, and then it shifts just a little bit. So once again, same in all three proposals. So as we look at most of our proposals, the area to the north is going to remain pretty much the same. We're going to look at some other areas where you're going to see the changes that have occurred. So proposal one is the very first one. As Brock said before, the yellow is the boundaries for the new elementary, which is the same in all three proposals also. So the boundaries for the new elementary did not change. What you will see is different is the impact it had on some of the neighboring schools and that ripple effect as we try to make sure that the enrollment and the opportunities at those schools would be a lot of successful experience for all of our students there. So this is proposal number one. It was our very first proposal. And there are basically only about six schools that would be impacted by proposal number one. That was, there isn't a lot of information to share with you about proposal number one as far as pros or cons. It just impacted those five, six schools that bordered the new elementary and a couple of it touched some of those schools also. So that is proposal number one. Now, when we started looking at proposal number one, there was some concern about fifty-six hundred in the Roy area and it moving to a five-lane, five-lane road. And that brought up some safety concerns. So because of that, we looked once again at those boundaries for those schools that bordered our new school and kind of the ripple effect that that would have. So this proposal was put in place and it was suggested or recommended that we use fifty-six hundred as a border for those schools. Now, the ones that were impacted here were, you can see Municipal Elementary School. It's down in the right-hand corner. You can see it right there, it's in the green. Brock's going to pull it back. But as you keep going to the original, sorry, Brock. So as you look at the original, right over there next to Freedom Elementary, right? The piece that Brock is touching actually is bust to Midland Elementary, which is up a little bit higher. Go up a little bit. No, up, one more. So Midland Elementary has students bused from that bottom Brock just touched. And then the one right there and the down below are both bused to Municipal Elementary. So that was one of the things that was looked at in this second proposal. And Municipal Elementary now has contiguous boundaries and doesn't have those others over there. There, you can see that. Now, the other one that was impacted with this, of course, is Roy Elementary. And you can see right now where fifty-six hundred runs across, right there. And so Roy Elementary was moved up and goes over and crosses thirty-five hundred, which is that triangular piece on your left, was added to Roy Elementary. And then Lakeview Elementary stayed pretty much the same, which borders there. If you go down to the bottom, you can see Freedom Elementary in the yellow. And that was extended to bump up against Municipal. Midland Elementary up above Roy. You can see that a large portion of Midland was taken off and added to Roy to change those numbers. And then Midland moved up also. Valley View Elementary was also impacted. Instead of going up across the tracks, they now stay down below. So as I stated, this was put in place mostly because of safety concerns with fifty-six hundred. And as we did some more investigating and talking to more people, what we found was that a large number of the community members in that area felt like there was no need to make fifty-six hundred a boundary line. They felt confident that with the HAWK, which is the light that allows students to cross fifty-six hundred and with a crossing guard, that this would be a safe crossing for their students.
So is HAWK just the name of the crossing? Because I've seen that come up a lot. So it's just a major crossing?
It's just the flashing light.
It's the crossing light that flashes.
It's an arm that goes clean across the road. You can't miss it.
You, you can't miss it. You're, you're right.
Some do, but you can't miss it.
When someone pushes the button, it, it flashes and is very visible. So the feedback we received from some of those members of the community was that they felt comfortable having their students cross fifty-six hundred as long as the HAWK would remain in place. And we verify with Utah Department of Transportation that it would be in place and that the crossing guard would also remain there after the construction on fifty-six hundred. So we also had the opportunity to spend some time in Roy Elementary and their parking lot. What we find is that their parking lot is very small. And that based on fifty-six hundred and the traffic there, the parking lot can easily become congested with cars backing up and not being able to get on fifty-six hundred. With this proposal number two, we add additional students to Roy Elementary that would require two buses to transport them from across thirty-five hundred to Roy Elementary. So we're increasing, or there's the possibility of increasing that congestion in the parking lot of Roy Elementary. So those are some of the reasons that were shared with us that maybe putting fifty-six hundred as a boundary, even though we know that it will be a concern to be a five-lane highway, that we feel like what's in place right now would negate having to use fifty-six hundred. Do you have any questions about proposal number two?
Mary Jo, if that was to stay, when the fifty-six hundred is done, would you reshuffle them kids back over to Roy Elementary being across the street?
So you're saying, would we adjust boundaries once fifty-six hundred was done?
Yes. So the HAWK stays in place, it's not leaving. But yet those kids are across the street. The reason we're doing this is safety issues during construction. You know what I mean? The road's going from thirty-five to forty-five, which five percent on that, probably closer to fifty.
Right.
Three lanes. And we got twenty thousand cars a day or something like that to go through there. All right? After three years or two years of construction and the frustration of everybody, will they relook at that? Or will the suggestion be made that says, listen, now it's done, it's flowing well, life is good. We got the HAWK up still. You can come back over where you're five minutes away instead of forty-five minutes away?
I think my understanding right now would be that the boundaries we put in place now would stay from the beginning of next year and just move forward with that. We wouldn't make an adjustment now just for the time of the construction on fifty-six hundred. But the decision that would be made would be one that would start at the beginning of next year and then just stay that way moving forward unless something else occurred that we felt like we had to adjust boundaries. So that's proposal number two.
Can I just ask about, about the crossing guard? Because that is, that is a city program, not, not a UDOT program.
That's correct.
So that has to be a commitment from the city, not from the?
Yes, not from UDOT.
Not from UDOT. So you're saying that's going to stay the same with the HAWK, but that's not really their call to make? Is that correct?
I think that, I don't know, Jen, I don't know if it was UDOT that said the crossing guard would be there. My understanding would be that Roy City. And I don't, and I don't know, Jen, I haven't talked directly to Roy City if they are committing to leaving the crossing guard there afterwards. So that would be a good question.
That's a really good question.
It would work to that end, yeah.
We have that, that's in place.
Yeah, it is in place. I mean, a crossing guard at fifty miles an hour is different than a crossing guard at thirty-five miles an hour.
Well, you won't get the one that got hit at thirty-five. She won't come back, so that's the issue. You know what I mean? That's the whole issue with that road.
So I think, I think Jen, you bring up a valid point. There is a concern with crossing fifty-six hundred. I know that we're trying to be equitable in what we do. And I know it's been raised that we have some other streets.
I did very clearly confirm today that that is going to be a forty-five mile an hour speed limit.
Okay.
That is going to go up at least ten miles an hour.
And we know that there are some other considerations on fifty-six hundred, which is the direction that the traffic is traveling, the sun. Those types of things are additional concerns on fifty-six hundred, which we may not see with some of our other five-lane roads that we have some students that are crossing. Okay, so that is proposal number two. Now, because of feedback, we are moving to proposal number three for the elementary schools. Let's take it, let's take it back. So we had proposal number one, which just impacted the six schools that were close and ordered and a little and a little bit of a ripple effect with West Haven Elementary there and Freedom. And we moved to proposal number two, which definitely impacted more schools as we tried to look at the safety concern on 5,600. Now, if you look at proposal number three, you can see that it did not use 5,600 as a boundary. It did clean up those non-continuous boundaries that were going to Midland Elementary and to Municipal Elementary. So, if you look at Freedom Elementary, right here, we've added the top piece, which is that triangle, and then down to the bottom. So they basically assimilated those two pieces, one that used to be taken to Midland Elementary and one that used to be bused to Municipal. So Freedom now has both of those pieces. And what we did was, you can see the tracks there where Municipal is in the bottom left, right there in the green. That used to be where our boundary followed with that little jet that came out. And right now, it goes a little further, almost to where the rail trail is there, is where that boundary on this third proposal would be. And those students, of course, will be bused to Municipal across those railroad tracks. And then Lakeview Elementary stays the same. Valley View is still the same as it was in the second proposal. And North Park remains the same as it was in the second proposal. Midland changed a little bit as far as being squared off up there at the top.
Mary Jo, when you talk about that they will be bused because there's a rail road there, but that, there is an overpass on that rail trail, right?
On the rail trail?
Yeah. On 5,600, it goes up over.
Yes, currently.
President, do you mind? We've got a guy that's been on the scene. Like, he has been just intensively studying, and his name is Mr. Dave Hells. And I've asked him, Mary Jo and Brock have done just a great job showing the proposals, but he has actual anecdotal evidence of, he has, he's driven it, he's parked in it, he's looked at it from every different angle. And I just would like him to speak to a few of his perspectives in relation to the proposals.
Just a couple of things that I noted as we were there observing. The HAWK, first of all, when you are, I was stopped multiple times by the HAWK, and there is really no missing it. It is a very, very, very driver-aware, blinking, flashing. But I also noted something else when the HAWK is going off, that the crossing guard does not bring children onto that road until she decides to or he decides to. So the HAWK goes, the crossing guard stands and waits for all traffic to stop, and then they sign up and moves the passerby across the road. So that was something that actually was a great comfort to me. The other thing that I noticed when I went to back-to-school night was that there were hardly any cars in the parking lot. And I had thought, because I got there just a moment late, I thought, there's no way I'm gonna get a parking spot at back-to-school night. And when I pulled up, I was like, wow, there are plenty of places to park. But when I got in the gym to see the presentation by UDOT and the principal, full, packed. So I thought, where did these people come from? And it dawned on me as I was leaving back-to-school night, what had happened. I got in my car and I was about to try to get back out on 5,600. Very busy road, lots and lots of cars, cars stacking up behind me. I thought, how will I ever get out on this road? Well, something happened that Principal Fall had explained to me, and the crossing guard button, actually that night, there wasn't a crossing guard, it was parents with their kids. But that night, button and the HAWK went off, all the traffic stopped, and the parking lot in Roy Elementary emptied, including me. So I realized, okay, there's a trick. Then I thought to myself, I've got to see this. So I came back the next morning to see, actually, a few days later, let me see what's happening with just the movement in the neighborhood across. So I didn't want anybody to think I was stalking them, so I never did stop my vehicle, I just kept moving. But I drove through the neighborhood and UDOT had blocked off, for construction, they'd blocked off all of the walkways. And I was amazed and even pleased to see lots of children moving, but most every group had an adult of some form with them. And I watched one little family because I thought, they're gonna sneak down that road and try to get across 56, but they didn't. They walked straight down all the way around to the HAWK. So I thought, okay, so that's working. They're all moving back through the housing development to get out to the HAWK. So then I flipped back around and thought, I gotta see this. So I hopped back out, out to the HAWK I went. And sure enough, I was quite fortunate every time because the HAWK went off on me, right? So there it is, flashing, flashing, and I stopped again. And sure enough, this time, crossing guard in the morning and after school, there she stood, lights are going, everyone's still there, cars stopped, and then she moved onto the road and moved the children safely across. I talked to Lane Finley, and it changed my perspective. I had been a real advocate of, I think we better bus them all the way up the road, but many of the constituents, the patrons, the parents weren't excited about that because they were very pleased to walk across the road just a few feet away and a few minutes to get there instead of a bus ride up and down. So my mind changed because of what the HAWK had done for me. I was like, that thing's working beautifully. And with the crossing guard, nobody's on that road until the crossing guard moves them. It was a lot safer and a lot more friendly and user-friendly than I had expected. So one of the things I felt with a little bit of a recommendation that she may make is that there was suddenly an interest in allowing the families across 56 to make that crossing at that safe HAWK. And coming also, to Janice's point, will be an overpass as well, so that the kids that even live a little further up, they could choose either to walk over the road or go to the HAWK. But you have two pretty secure crossings, so that was my observation.
So just to summarize, on that proposal number three was, they felt like the HAWK and the crossing guards would provide for the safe crossing. There would be no additional congestion in the Roy Elementary parking lot. Parents could walk to and attend the school there. Because of the capacity with this proposal, it will also allow for a number of boundary exceptions for those who wanted to stay at the schools they are currently at. And when Brock and I wrote down the district committee and which proposals they had felt were going to be the best, proposal number two and proposal number three were almost 50/50 as far as the votes that were cast for those, by those district committees. So there is a recommendation that number three would be the proposal we put before the...
Mary Jo, I just have a question. Is, for the other schools that are effective between two and three, I know we've got Country View and Municipal and Midland. Are there any other concerns from those areas, from those school areas from two versus three? Or are our main concerns coming from the Roy Elementary?
We had a number of concerns from Roy Elementary. I did think it was interesting that some of those schools that were impacted by proposal number three had voted for proposal number three. Their district committee had chosen that proposal.
So most of the other schools impacted are fine? There's no complaint? Not as many complaints or concerns for the other schools?
We did not hear as many, but I don't know if there'll be more in this next month.
Are the busing costs similar on all of them?
In talking of transportation, what they're thinking is going to happen is that there may be adjustment in the number of buses to different schools, but it should stay pretty much the same. We're not going to increase a lot or decrease a lot.
Thank you.
Okay, you too. Would you just really quickly, because there's a lot of proposals, and that is so much great work, we so appreciate the work of these two, they've been stellar. What, which proposals does the board kind of need to be kind of wrapping their brain around in terms of what you will recommend?
So after the study, I can all speak for the secondary world. Gathering feedback, everything that's gone into this, the committee felt that for high school, proposal one was the recommendation with the 10th grade students receiving that grandfather status and able to finish their high school career at this school they're currently at if they choose to. For the junior high, the committee felt that the proposal two was the recommendation they would like to make for the best interest of all schools and students involved.
And then for the elementary, it was proposal three, which we felt like provided a very balanced school enrollment, created those continuous school boundaries.
I was concerned with the high school. Does that still bring into question the concern over West Haven? And about them being flipped back and forth?
West Haven didn't bring up that concern, are you?
Harrisville.
Harrisville, yes. So what the committee started to look at is modeled after Roy High School currently, as the growth in a community starts to become more dense, the size of the boundary starts to shrink. And where Weaver High is above capacity now, to get it back to under capacity with room for some continued growth, it shrinks their boundaries to where there most likely isn't room for expansion at Weaver in the future. So it is very unlikely that Weaver would expand back into Harrisville and bring them back into a boundary situation at the high school.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Janice.
Great board. I just, I knew we'd run out of time, so I gave you some quick just announcements. There's some great things coming, and I wanted to make you aware of them in case you wanted to get them on your calendar. We do have our state superintendent, Dr. Sid Dixon. Sidney Dixon will be in our district on Wednesday, the 13th, and she's going to be visiting the Young Parents Program at Orchard Springs Elementary. I can't say enough about the fact that our teen center is gonna be opening soon at Two Rivers as well, and I wanted you to make sure you put that on your calendar. There will be a grand opening event on Thursday, September 21st.
Say that again, Janice, the first part.
Yes, so, Sid Dixon, Dr. Sid Dixon will be in Weaver School District. She visits a lot of districts across the state. And she will be visiting our district on September 13th, Jen. And she's gonna start at Two Rivers and visit the teen program.
Okay, that's...
But then he said at Orchard Springs.
Oh, and she is gonna go to Orchard Springs.
Orchard's on there.
But that's a second visit.
That's a second visit. She is, we're still working out the details, John, and I'll get that on your calendar. We'll make sure it's on the calendar if you want to meet her and visit with her.
And then a couple of other quick things, board. Janice and Kelly and I went down to the JLC Legislative Delegate Assembly a little bit ago, and I just wanted to make sure you had the draft form of the priorities that the JLC is putting forth there in terms of what our prioritized funding request will be moving forward into the new legislative session. So take a look at those, review those. Janice or Kelly, anything you want to add to that? You're welcome to.
Well, I thought it was very interesting as there was great deliberation over the percentage that should be asked of the legislature. And they said, that's why they broke it down, because for instance, the 4% inflationary is a given. And so that's not even contestable. And then it depends on what they decide to do about the extra, the general and curricular fees that increases by 1.5%. So actually, what the request is 8% for LEA flexibility, but it's with these other things added in, and that was a lengthy discussion.
Right. So our overall WPU funding increase asked will be 13.5% this legislative session, which is a significant increase, yeah. But take a look at those, and if you have any questions, glad to. Kelly, anything you want to add to that? Okay. President, that's all I have.
Wonderful. Appreciate everybody and your input and your hard work and your presentations. Let's go ahead and take a break. You have about 90 seconds.